Thank you for joining us for the December 1st meeting of the Fortuna City Council. If you'll silence your electronic devices, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and call this meeting to order, and we get a roll call.
Okay, sorry, I'm echoing over here. Let's see, there we go. Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here, and thank you. And at this time, we will have oral comments from the public. If any member of the public wishes to speak about something not on the agenda, this is the time. Seeing none, we come to the consent calendar now, and we have three items, the minutes from the November 17th regular meeting, a report of disbursements, and approval of the amended full-time classification and pay rate schedule for 2526. Anybody wish to pull anything?
C.
Okay, go ahead.
Just vote on it separately.
Okay, thank you. And is there any public comment on these consent calendar? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve consent calendar items A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
I'll make a motion to approve C.
A second.
Motion to approve consent calendar item C. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, we come now quicker than we would have thought to consent to city council business. Authorize the city manager to execute a $1,500,000 supplemental budget request for additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. Staff report?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So, the city council, as you are aware, is part of the side letter negotiations with the FPA, requested staff bring back an item to counsel to pay down the city's liability with CalPERS to recognize annual interest payment savings. The goal was to have these annual interest payment savings go towards reducing the overall cost burden of the pay increases provided to sworn officers and sergeants. And so, the staff report contains detailed information on the city's liability with CalPERS. I'm not going to go through all the detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions on it. And then, as far as the financial impact is concerned, the $1.5 million would be required to take out of, from general fund reserves. And general fund reserves would be approximately about $5 million, with $1 million of that kind of set aside and reserved for the upcoming general plan update. So, that leaves about $4 million that's really available. The city's adopted reserve policy states keeping 180 days of operating expenditures on hand, which equates to about $4.2 million. So, the $4 million available will be below this amount by about $200,000. And so, council will need to waive the stated 180 days of operating reserve policy for fiscal year 2526 in order to make the payment. And then, I also wanted to highlight that the $1.5 million additional payment to CalPERS will result in an estimated $1,250,000 in interest payment savings. And the annual amount saved will start at approximately $130,000 beginning next fiscal year, which is slightly better than what we originally estimated of $106,000. So, that was good news in talking with our CalPERS actuary. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for any questions.
Is there any questions from the council? Our comments? Any public comment on this item? I would say that we have made these discretionary payments in the past, and has, I can't even remember how much we've saved in interest on that, and plus, it drops our annual payments down to make them easier to handle. And in doing this, we're also paying ourselves in helping out with our police department and general fund salaries. So... Well, no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
I'd look, one quick question, just can you clarify, was the, when we're dipping below our six-month reserves, that before or after the general fund update, you know, kind of budget that we're setting aside for that?
We have, so this will bring us down to about $5 million.
Okay.
The million, yeah, it's once the general plan update amount is really spent is when we'll dip down, but we wanted to do it now, just because we've kind of already set aside that million dollars for the general plan update.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize city manager to execute a supplemental budget request, make an additional discretionary payment in the amount of $1,500,000 to be paid to the CalPERS pension trust, and waive the 180 days of operating reserve policy for fiscal year 2526.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, thank you. And we come to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2025-778, making it unlawful for any person in the city to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As your mayor just mentioned, this is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2025-778, making it unlawful for any person in the city to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person. This is the fourth time the nitrous oxide topic has been before your council. The last time was on November 17th, and at that time, staff performed the first reading of the ordinance, and your city council made an amendment requesting that the sale or distribution of nitrous oxide by a wholesale distributor of food supplies directly to the location of a food preparation facility located in the city of Fortuna be allowed, and so, that amendment is contained in the ordinance. And I would be happy to answer any questions, as well as the police chief, he is in attendance as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or comments for staff? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance 2025-778, and read by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call, Luke.
Okay, ordinance 2025-778, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, adding chapter 8.45 to Title VIII, making it unlawful for any person in the city to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. And now, we come to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance 2025-779, amending the Fortuna Municipal Code zoning regulations, and implement the six-cycle housing element, as well as much, much more here. So, we have a staff report tonight.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Michelle Nielsen, I'm the contract city planner. I work for Plan West, I'm a senior planner with them, and I do have a presentation. There's quite a bit to go through, it's kind of dense, so hopefully, this will make things a little more clear if there was any confusion. So, I'm going to go ahead and hopefully sharing the correct screen here, it seemed to be, okay. So, we'll go ahead and move on here. So... I just kind of, there's lots of things on my screen. So, the matter, this, this agenda item covers two sets of amendments. It's, it's proposed to amend the city's zoning map, and it is proposed to amend the text of the zoning ordinance, the zoning regulations, Title 17. And so, why, why is this being undertaken? There's a couple of reasons. State law requires a city's zoning ordinance and other land use regulations to be consistent with the general plan. And currently, at this point in time, the zoning regulations and the zoning map do not reflect changes that were adopted as part of the mill district specific plan that was adopted earlier this year. And then, there was also changes in programs and policies in the city's six-cycle housing element that was adopted in 2019. And also, another reason for undertaking all these amendments is to complete housing element programs in order to maintain compliance with state housing law. And maintaining compliance is important for continuing access, cities access to grant funding like CDBG and other programs like that, but also because state law now, there's, the state can enforce jurisdictions and do not have compliant housing elements to, to bring them into compliance. So, it's, these amendments are being undertaken for these, these reasons, compliance with state law largely. So, where are we at here in this process? What's the process for amending the zoning regulations? This kind of flow chart kind of summarizes all that. There was a notice published in the North Coast Journal, individual notices were mailed to the property owners for the planning commission hearing, prior 20, 20 calendar days or more prior to the planning commission hearing back in October. There was a planning commission hearing, and at the planning commission hearing, the commission accepted any public testimony that was made that evening, moving my bars, covering things. And then, following the planning commission hearing, there was another notice published in the North Coast Journal, and another set of notices were mailed to the individual property owners, because the amendments proposed to change the zoning of some properties is discussed more in the presentation and the staff report. So, where we're at is, tonight, we have a hearing first reading for, and for this agenda, I'm before your council. And let's see, what is this? Oh, my goodness, there's so many things covering my screen. So, to summarize the zoning amendments, like I was saying, there's text amendments that would amend the municipal code, the text that folks read, and then, it would amend the zoning maps. And so, the text amendments are to allow supportive housing, transitional housing, community care facilities for six or fewer individuals, consistent with state law, allow what are called supportive housing developments, again, consistent with state law, update and add definitions such as family supportive housing, target population, and transitional housing. And these all, these, this group of text amendments, they just kind of summarized here, these all are implement programs in the city's adopted housing element. And then, the zoning map amendments, they update two existing qualified combining zones, Q2, which was adopted in 1988, and Q16, which was similar in nature, and that was adopted in, I think it was, I have to move my little bar here again, in 2002. And the reason for these zoning map amendments, I'll go over it more, and I got maps that hopefully will help make things more clear, is in part to, one part is to implement the mill district specific plan and general plan amendments that were made as part of that process that was completed earlier this year, but also to implement housing element programs related to the city's housing element inventory. So, let me... So, we'll, we'll go over the zoning text amendments first, and these are summaries of the, of the amendments. So... These bars are annoying. So, the changes to the zoning regulations would remove the existing provisions that reference one second residential dwelling units per lot per Fortuna Municipal Code That, that section of the ordinance was actually repealed back in 2021, and now, second residential units, more, now more commonly referred to as accessory dwelling units, are regulated by an updated section of the municipal code, that's the 17.06.001. of the municipal code. That's the seventeen point oh-six dot zero-zero-one point five and state accessory dwelling unit law. So this is kind of more of a cleanup, and this is seen as red line changes for the residential states, residential single-family and the multifamily zones. Okay. And then, some additional text amendments are to updates that specify transitional and supportive housing and community care facilities for six or fewer individuals, that these are residential uses that are permitted in the same manner as other residential uses of the same type in the same zone in accordance with state law. This, the language that the red line edits in the zoning regulations that are proposed are verbatim, essentially verbatim of state law, and these up, you know, so that aligns with those. And this would apply to all zones except for AE. And as far as supportive housing developments. Just a second here, move this out of the way. So the where, it would, these new regulations would apply to all zones, allow multifamily or mixed uses, including non-residentials that permit multifamily uses, whether the multifamily is permitted on a conditional or by right zones. So that, as, that's out of state law. This is, it would apply to the multifamily zones, commercial industrial zones, and the public facility zones. And one of the qualifications, there's quite a laundry list out of state law. Hundred percent of the units have to be affordable and set aside for lower-income households and subject to a fifty-five-year affordability covenant. It must meet the minimum state standards, or the state standard for the minimum number of units that will be set aside as permanent supportive housing units. There's standards in state law about that, and it's reflected in the proposed regulations for the target population, dedicated onsite area for supportive housing services, and then all units must include a bathroom and kitchen or cooking facilities. And those qualifications and the, which are summarized here, what's proposed in the ordinance, they, those are out of state law, and this was a section that was added, the state law requirements came online in twenty-nineteen. So this would be another, and were percolated into the city's housing element. So this would, these amendments would satisfy those requirements of state law in that housing element program. So we'll go to the zoning map amendments. There are two existing qualified combining zones. Let me keep clicking. Just go through here. So there is the RM-Q-two, and this, this zone, multi, this qualified combining zone, it applies to parcels that are in the mill district specific plan, planning area. There's a established residential neighborhood that is adjacent to the mill, the mill district proper, and they are, they have this qualifying combining zone, and it also applies to a few of the city's designated housing element inventory sites. And under this Q-two combining zone, multifamily development requires a use permit. And under the housing element, the sites, the, so the, where it applies to those inventory sites, those parcels have been identified in the city's housing element inventory for more than two cycles. And when that happens, state law requires that multifamily be, where at least twenty percent of the units are affordable to, to lower-income households, that they be permitted by right. And if they had a lesser, you know, fifteen percent below that twenty percent threshold, they would require a conditional use permit. So the language of the qualified combining zone would reflect that housing element requirement, along with uniqueness of the mill district specific plan area that we uncovered as we were preparing this, and I'll go over that a little bit more. And the RM, the RM, the Q-sixteen, that applies to another small group, it's a small group of housing element inventory sites. There's three of them. They're on Virginia. They're not developed at this point in time, but that, they are also lower-income inventory sites, and the Q-sixteen just prohibits multifamily development. So there's a juxtaposition with housing, the city being able to meet its housing element program requirements and state law with the existing zoning, hence changing the existing zoning. That was probably, could have said that more concisely. So the proposed Q-zone would, would replace the existing Q-zone for those areas, and I do have maps. I am getting to those. So the uses that will be permitted in, under this Q-zone would be single-family residential development, including ADUs, will continue to be, to be permitted by right. This is important for the mill district neighborhood, that area that's adjacent, because most of those parcels are already developed with single-family residences. And if the, if we, if a Q-zone, that, this Q-zone that is proposed, that would continue to permit the single-family residential uses, if that was not made a part of the zoning change, those single-family residential uses would become legal non-conforming uses. And the city zoning regulations have a lot of limitations on rebuilding, if they're rehabbing those units, if something happened to them, or if somebody wanted, the property owner wanted to do in addition. Also, there are financing improvements and reconstruction when a, and a non-conforming use is more difficult as well. So this Q-zone, as drafted, would eliminate that problem and ensure those folks can, you know, something happens, they need to rebuild, a fire, earthquake, they can rebuild, they want to, you know, they, the house needs to be rehabilitated, they will have a legal, it won't have this non-conforming provision. And they could add ADUs as well, and multifamily, if they so choose, in which at least twenty percent of the units are affordable to lower-income households, because multifamily development would be permitted to be compliant with that, the requirements for supportive housing developments, that would be an allowance. But just like all the other parcels, it, that doesn't mean that's the only type of development someone would have to build in those zones. The, it just, it's added to the list of enumerated uses for each of those zones. The other uses that would be by right would be transitional supportive housing, community care facilities for less, six or fewer, SB-nine duplexes, urban lot splits, and the existing list of permitted accessory uses of the RM zone. Those, those won't change. Conditionally permitted uses, the multifamily developments in which twenty percent, or fewer than twenty percent units that are not affordable, that would be permitted, but would require a conditional use permit. And then existing uses that are already enumerated in RM are rest homes, community care facilities for seven or more, mobile home parks. So filing, maps. So this shows the residential neighborhood that is adjacent to the, that is part of the mill district planning area and is next to the mill district, and about, I think it was seventy-five percent of these lots are actually developed with single-family residences already. So it'd be important to apply that Q, the proposed Q. And the, the area here, there's four lots that are Zone CT. The two on the north that abut Newburgh Road, they are actually already, they are developed with single-family residences, and I think there's a bit of an accessory use on the one that is the, the one, the lot that's on the southeast corner there. So these would all, what's proposed is for all these parcels would go to this RM-Q, and it would implement the mill district specific plan, which there was already policy language and discussion in that, in that plan, and with the general plan amendment, the general plan land use element amendment was for this to, was really just straight RM, but the Q will protect those existing single-family residents, those property owners, and avoid that non-conforming situation. So Area B, we'll just go to both of these. So these lots are, they are actually in the city's housing element inventory, and this would, the proposed Q-zone would allow the multifamily, where twenty percent or more of the units are affordable to lower-income houses by right, but it will also, like the area we're just looking at, single-family residential uses will still be principally permitted. So there's some flexibility for those property owners, yet at the same time, the city would be fulfilling this program of its housing element. And I think that's all. I think all these parcels are currently, they don't have single-family residences on them at this point in time. And then Area C, this is the, where the Q-sixteen, this is the Q-zone that currently just outright prohibits multifamily. So this would have the same Q-zone that we've been talking about, or I've been talking about. So kind of to revisit all this, Area A, the general plan document being implemented is the mill district specific plan, the general plan, the existing zone is RM-Q-two and CT, those four little parcels that the, were the CT, and the proposed zone would be the, would continue to allow the single-family residential uses, but also allow the multifamily where twenty, at least twenty percent are affordable. And Area B, that's the area to the east of Safeway, this would, the proposed zoning change would implement housing element program H-ten, and the existing zone is just, this has the Q, the RM and the Q-two, and it would go to the same Q. So that's the simple part, is the, it's all going to the same Q. And Area C, these are the ones that are on Virginia. The, they are, again, the proposed zoning changes would implement housing element program H-ten, and the existing zone is Q-sixteen, and it would go to the same zone. And so as far as SEQA goes, the zoning map amendments, they are with, for Area A, that was covered by the supplemental EIR that was certified for the mill district specific plans. They were within the scope of that review, the project description, and contemplated as part of that entire update. The zoning text amendments that implement the housing elements and the zoning map amendments would be statutory, there's two exemptions. There's a recent statutory exemption that was enacted earlier this year by the state. It's covered by those, and also it would be within the general rule exemption. I came across a statutory exemption between the planning commission hearing and this hearing, so we're putting, you know, belts and suspenders and pointing them both in here. And let's see. So before I forget, in the staff report, on the first page, there's staff recommendation, there's a typo that references, talks about the text amendments implementing housing element programs H-twelve and, and it says H-eight. It's actually program H-eighteen. So it's programs H-twelve and H-eighteen that would be implemented by the text amendments. So staff's recommendation would be to find the proposed amendments are in compliance with SEQA, and to, that they're in the public interest, are consistent with the general plan, and are consistent with other parts of the zoning regulations and other titles of the municipal code, obviously following a public hearing and receiving any public and discussion. And so our, our recommendation would be to, you know, proceed with the public hearing and then close and consider a motion and first readings for the two ordinances. And I'd be happy to answer any questions there may be.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions regarding this for?
If we're looking to specifically increase our housing numbers and allow multifamily in these zones, why not just allow them as principally permitted? You know, with this, you know, why make them conditionally permitted?
So, that, that, I, um, we have heard in contact with HCD for other clients, that when this, that twenty percent threshold for sites, some sites that have been reused, it comes up, where the zoning gets changed to allow multifamily by right, that, that doesn't, well, that's good, but you, from their perspective, you lose the incentive, you're not incentivizing affordable how unit, multifamily development that includes some affordable units sufficiently. And so that, that client, we've had to go back and do a little bit more how we're going to incentivize that. That, that was the most recent input we have gotten from their analyst on why not just put it in multi by right in the RM like that.
So it's, so they kind of add a little extra obstacle to incentivize them to go twenty percent affordable housing?
Theoretically, it would, it may do that.
And what, and just out of curiosity, what is the calculation or the metric for determining if it's affordable or not? Is that based on our local income, like some percent of that, or state?
Yeah. It's, it's based on area median income, so they, the state, every year, they update the income guidelines by, by county, and it's based, it's a slide scale based on the number of persons in the household. And eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income is, that would be moderate income, affordable. So eighty percent and lower is, would be the lower income households. And I haven't looked at the number, the, what the, the AMI, the area median income for the region was in this year, but they do publish it, then they do update it, based on California, and each region's a little bit different. So Santa Clara's going to have a higher number.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? It's a big chunk. I can't imagine it being an easy thing to navigate with what is sometimes a moving target from the state. Any public comment on this item is if we are a public hearing. Okay. I see none. We'll close the public hearing, and we have two separate items here, two separate motions.
I make a motion to introduce and hold first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-seven-seven-nine and read by title only, and continue the public hearing to the city council's next regular meeting on the second reading and adoption.
I second.
We have a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
Okay, ordinance twenty-two-five-seven-seven-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, to amend Fortuna Municipal Code Title Seventeen, zoning regulations, chapter seventeen point zero-three, seventeen point zero-six, and seventeen point zero-eight, to implement the six-cycle housing element and find the amendments to the, to be exempt from additional California Environmental Quality Act SEQA review pursuant to Public Resources Code and SEQA guidelines. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. And we have a second item here.
I'll make a motion to introduce and hold the first reading of ordinance 2025-780 and read by title only, and continue the public hearing to the city council's next regular meeting for the second reading and adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a roll call.
Ordinance 2025-780, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, to amend Fortuna municipal code Title 17, Section 17.02, .030 zoning map, to adopt the qualified combining zone, to implement the six-cycle housing element and Mill District specific plan, and find the amendments to be exempt from additional California Environmental Quality Act SEQA review pursuant to public resources code and SEQA guidelines. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. And again, thank you for your work and diligence on this, and thank you for our senior planner, too. Okay, so with that, we come to the city manager's report.
Honorable mayor and council members, this, last week, I participated in a number of news media interviews regarding the police officer wage increases and/or the hiring freeze. The police chief participated with me, ABC 23, K-Mud, and Time Standard were just a few of the news outlets that I spoke to. In an interesting turn of events, Cal Recycle sent Humboldt Waste Management Authority on November 14th a stop work order on their $2.7 million grant to process organics, organic waste. And as you may recall, the processing of organic waste is a SB 1383 state mandate, it's a requirement that we all will start participating in on July 1st, 2026. And so, all the local cities and the county had to rally together and lobby Cal Recycle's Grants Division to continue with the $2.7 million grant, because those funds are desperately needed to create that organics waste processing facility. And I think we were relatively successful, we also, because we did participate in a meeting with them on November 25th. What was interesting is that Cal Recycle's grant unit and Cal Recycle's compliance unit do, do not speak, and the Cal Recycle compliance unit is the unit that myself and the other cities and the county speak with on a regular basis, because we are under a compliance plan, because we are not SB 1383, 1383 compliant. There was also a meeting between myself, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works to start to identify how to address some of the concerns that we have with the pavilion at Roanoke Park. As some of you may know, there's some potential foundation issues, there's some flowing water underneath the building, there's a leaking roof, and so, our assistant city engineer and another local engineer will be assessing that foundation in the future, and hopefully that will be contained in the capital improvement plan. Myself and our senior planner Katie Schmidt, we had another meeting with the Land Water Conservation Fund regarding the Vancel acquisition. And just as a reminder, if we're selected, which it does slightly seem promising, because we've had numerous meetings with the LWCF at this point in time, the entire recreation area, the acquisition parcel, there will need, it will all need to be placed under the LWCF protection, and so, only a very small portion where the water storage would remain under just city ownership, and so, there would be a lot line adjustment, and so, we've provided some additional information to LWCF, but again, we'll be returning to your city council with more information as we hear, as we hear more from the LWCF. I also attended a meeting, again, with our senior planner Katie Schmidt on Thursday, November 20th, an HCOG meeting to advocate for STIP funding for the Kenmar and Ross Hill Road intersection. There was some public comment and letter writing, folks were opposed to the city of Fortuna receiving funds from the STIP for the Kenmar-Ross Hill Road intersection, and so, I went to advocate on the city's behalf, and HCOG did include this project in their recommendation, so it seemed a worthy effort. And we, I participated in a number of community listening campaign interviews, hopefully, next city council meeting, you'll be receiving an update on the staff listening campaign interviews, and I look forward to bringing that to you. In addition, today, I sat in or listened to a Cal City's new legislation webinar, and I need to actually attend a few more webinars, because there's going to need to be a deep dive into some of the open meeting requirements, and so, I will bring that forward when that, when that's necessary. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city manager this time?
Were those letters of opposition from other, like, entities that were hoping to receive grant funds, or was it from, like, members of the public, again, on the Ross Hill Road?
It was from, I believe it was a nonprofit, that's a nonprofit mainly interested in bike and pedestrian access.
Okay.
Which I would just point out and put on the record, that the Kenmar-Ross Hill Road intersection will link to Class 1 trail, trail facilities, which would be the John Campbell Trail and the Great Redwood Trail, but it would also create bike and ped access, because those, those access or those multimodal points don't actually exist currently in that intersection at all, so there would be significant bike and ped improvement, should we receive the STIP. We will likely receive STIP fundings, and then hopefully, over time, we'll be able to develop that roundabout, which will include all that bike and ped improvement.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, and is there any future agenda items? No, nothing there, we'll go with council reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No Parks and Rec Commission meeting yet, they're having one next week, hopefully we have a quorum. But other than that, just a friendly reminder that it's getting cold and fireplaces are getting lit up, and being a past firefighter, there's more fires during this time of the year than any other time of the year. Holiday candles, all that stuff that you do, make sure that you are safe, get your stuff cleaned up, and make sure that you stay warm, but also stay careful.
All right, thank you, timely. Councilmember Diaz?
Not much to report, I attended the RCA meeting, quite intense, but not much to report on it.
Okay, well, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Uh, no REDEC meeting or anything, but I am also on the Fortuna High School Site Council. We had a meeting, and I was pretty disappointed about the Fortuna High math results. Students are, you know, a significant number of students are doing well below the state kind of expectations, you know, I'm not sure that there's much that we can do as a city, but, you know, it's just something that I'm aware of, my daughter's a sophomore at Fortuna High, so I'm kind of definitely aware of where they might be lacking a little bit, so, in any case, I think it's been an issue that the school's been aware of for a while, but I think the, the math results continue to get worse, so, just kind of something I'm a little concerned with, and
Okay.
Just observational, I guess, now, now there's anything we can take action on to help improve math, but just, yeah, that's what it is.
Mayor Protem Trent?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, well, I did, and attended the HCOG meeting, which you may, our city manager, Nielsen, was speaking of, and it was an interesting experience for her, and it's, public process is sometimes interesting, isn't it? And, but it's an opportunity for both sides to speak their viewpoint, so, that's the way it works. We did end up getting the RTIP or the Regional Transportation Improvement Program released in draft form to the public, and there will be another meeting such as that in the future, probably in January. So, we can report that. I also attended the Cal City's new laws seminar, webinar, whatever we want to call it, and there was a lot of things that were brought up and released, some of them are very interesting. There was one that I didn't know required this, but this was in the community services portion of new laws, that muralists are now exempt from having to be contractors to paint murals on the side of a building. And I did not know that you had to have a contractor's license to be an artist, but evidently you did, until this law was signed by the governor. There was another one such as that, if I can find it, oh, here's one, and a new law that prohibits an ordinance, that prohibits a person or organization from providing services to homeless. So, I did not know that we had that problem either, but evidently we do. So, that's just a couple of the things, there's a lot of other good ones that were in there, these are just two, some that would affect the city itself, is there's new laws against water theft, that raise the penalties and define things better, as well as new laws that raise the penalties for metal theft. We haven't had that big of a problem here, but I have, remember when I was on staff at Fortuna, going to different seminars and workshops, and there were, down in Vallejo, they were stealing the traffic signal and streetlight wiring out of the conduits in between streetlights. So, there were portions of Vallejo that were literally dark. And so, they also updated the regulations on how they buy the, how the metal purveyors buy the metal, and pay the salvage rates for it, and their records are required to be kept for a specific period of time, and they have to be available for review by local agency. So, that was a couple of good things, as well as I attended the downtown open house Friday, or Saturday, Saturday afternoon, and it was pretty well attended, they had live music, the Snow Machines, they had some of the businesses downtown, had cider and barbecue, and they were open, people come in, check things out, and it was, you would, I was actually pretty well, I'm impressed with the number of people that showed up, and how busy some of the businesses were, so, I hope we can keep that up through this season. Tomorrow, at the Chamber Luncheon, will be a group that is doing a, for lack of a better way of putting it, because I don't remember the exact name, a shop Humboldt program, which is similar to what we had here in Fortuna, where you saved your receipts and entered them in a drawing and got an award for that, they drew names out of the hat, so, something similar to that, and it helps keep our local businesses going and keeps the local tech space going. So, I'm looking forward to that. If you have time, come by the Monday Club tomorrow at noon, and you can check it out. And that's about all I have for right now, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.